Welcome to the regular meeting of Guadalupe City Council, Tuesday, February 11. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Costa Junior?
Here.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Villegas?
There.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Here.
Mayor Julian?
Here. We have a quorum. Will you please stand with me and for the Pledge of Allegiance and Legions? Ready? Ready again? Thank you. The next item is a moment of thanks, appreciation, condolences. Anything on the left side, any?
I have an appreciation. Thank you, Mayor, Council. As many of you are aware, there are recent reports of ICE activity in our community. I want to acknowledge the fear and uncertainty this has caused, especially for undocumented residents. I want to express concern about this activity to reassure our community that local government of Guadalupe does not engage in immigration enforcement. I want to extend my sincere thanks to the local nonprofits that have stepped up to meet the evolving needs of our community. Their dedication to ensure our residents have access to essential service. So thank you to FSA Little House by the Park, NDO Fund, Santa Barbara Immigration Legal Defense Center, the Guadalupe Food Back Volunteers, CHC, La Casita Blanca, and My Cop, just to name a few. Thank you.
Thank you. Just have a word of condolences to Brenda Mabaglisa Dulay family. She was 52, a young lady that passed on the 31st of January. So too young. Condolence to all the families, large families, so. Okay. We'll go on to item four is agenda review. Is there anybody, any council person wishes to change the order of business? If not, we'll look, go to item five, which is community participation forum. So if anybody's out there that has, wants to discuss an item that's not on the agenda, please feel comfortable coming forward or fill out an application or request to speak. And I don't see any, I've got a couple here, but they're on the agenda. Next item is ceremonial calendar. The first item. You know, there's a, it's related to the fire and it's a proclamation recognizing Guadalupe firefighters. Whereas on January 6th, 2025, a major fire engulfed the Los Angeles County area around Pacific Palisades, Pasadena, and the community of Altadena. And whereas on January 7th, 2025, the United States President Joseph Biden Jr. approved a major disaster declaration for the state of California to combat the wildfires. And whereas on January 7th, 2025, California Governor Gavin Newsom proclaimed the California State of Emergency and Disaster Declaration for the Los Angeles County area. And whereas a mutual aid request for firefighters was sent out to assist in battling the wildfires. And whereas the Santa Barbara County Fire Chiefs gathered firefighters from every city in Santa Barbara County to form a strike team to send to Los Angeles to assist in firefighting efforts. And whereas the Guadalupe Fire Department sent Fire Captain Patrick Smith and Fire Engineer David Bonaficio to be part of the strike team. And whereas Fire Captain Fernando Garcia, Fire Captain Jacob Nuno, Fire Engineer Guadalupe Reyes, and paid call fire Luis Ramos remain in the city to respond to all emergency calls by local residents. And whereas the strike team labored 12 straight days, working, working the line, doing search and rescue, and conducting cleanup duties to help residents and fellow safety personnel and officials through this major natural disaster. Whereas this wildfire has now become the most financially damaging disaster in the history of the United States and with over 25 confirmed deaths related to this incident. Now therefore be resolved that by virtue of an authority vested in me as a mayor and behalf of the city of Guadalupe, behalf of the city council of the city of Guadalupe, I do hereby proclaim recognized February 11th, 2025 as Guadalupe Firefighters Appreciation and Recognition Day. So I appreciate you gentlemen for. You know, you hear stories about all the firefighters and there was, I don't know how many thousands there were, 5,000, I don't know how many firefighters were out there. And you two, you two and staying here and going to the fire made it, made Guadalupe stand out in terms of what we do for the community. So you're really appreciated. So let me give this to you.
Well, that first night when we got called out, it was pretty late and we got there around 2 o'clock in the morning and went straight to work. Everybody in our strike force, I think we've been up for about 56 hours straight.
Wow.
And yes, we were really tired that on the second day. And finally got in, we didn't wake up till the next day and then went back to work again. The first night was very chaos. The winds were very high. Ambers going everywhere. Traffic from the citizens there going in and out and it was, it was crazy, but we all worked together as a team and we watched each other's back all the time. So it was great. It was a great experience for me. This is the first time I ever been to a wildland fire that's in the city, not in the mountains. I learned a lot. And I'm glad we all came home safe.
Yeah, that's great. You know what? Those that remain here that we mentioned here that stayed behind and they were on call a lot. You know, and I know that during the time you were gone out, but hear ambulance and you know, sirens in the community. So we appreciate those that remained here to protect the city and thank you two for going out there. It's a, you know, when you, you get near a little campfire and it gets too hot, it's amazing that you, you folks were in that, in that fire that you got 80, 90 mile an hour winds and fire everywhere. Just amazing. It's amazing that, thank God that none of the, I, I know that there was probably some firefighters that were hurt. There, there had to be, you know, burns and stuff, but I'm, thank God that nobody was, you know, actually died from this thing that, that I know of. And then we appreciate all you folks do out there for us. People forget about little towns like Guadalupe and other, and other places. You had people from all over the, the west coast, Mexico, Canada. You know, it's, it's amazing what happens when you get together and trying to help your fellow man. So appreciate you all for going and appreciate the local firefighters that remain here to protect us. So thank you. The next item is proclamation, February 2025 Black History Month. Whereas during the Black History Month, we celebrate the many achievements and contributions made by the African Americans to our economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development. And whereas in 1926, Black History Month grew out of establishment of Negro History Week by Carter G. Woodson and the Association for the Study of American, African American Life and History. And whereas in 1976, Black History Month was formally adopted to honor and affirm the importance of black history throughout our American experience, which dates thousands of years and includes some of the, some of the greatest, most advanced and innovative societies that we can all draw inspiration from. Whereas since 1976, every American president has designated February as Black History Month and endorsed a specific theme. And whereas 2025 Black History Month theme is African Americans and Labor. And whereas the observance of Black History Month calls our attention to the continued need to battle racism and build a society that lives up to its democratic ideals. And whereas the city of Guadalupe continues to work toward becoming an inclusive community in which all citizens and residents, past, present, and future are respected and recognized for their contribution and potential contributions to our community, the state, the country, and the world. Whereas the city of Guadalupe is proud to honor the history and contributions of American, African Americans in our community throughout our state and nation. Now therefore be it resolved by the virtue of an authority vested in me as mayor and on behalf of the city council of the city of Guadalupe, I do hereby proclaim February 25 as Black History Month. So thanks to all the, our black African and chief.
Few words. Thank you very much for, not only for our city for recognizing this, but for our nation. I want to make sure too that it's understood that for a city of Guadalupe, African Americans are woven into the fabric and the history of this city. We have, I take the honor of being their Director of Public Safety, but you look at our Finance Director, who has African American history. And she brought my little buddy, her, her son today. He's sitting back here and these kind of proclamations show him the benefit. And then too, I got another friend who's not even here tonight, but he was, I saw him this, this weekend. He happens to be married to our city clerk, who's, who's African American. And I think Bill, our planner, is he still here?
Yes, he is.
Okay, yeah.
He's not going anywhere, yeah.
Okay, he has to present hopefully quickly. Tonight. So thank you. Thank the city of Guadalupe. And we see all our friends and supporters that are here that I've had the opportunity just in staff and city council who show their appreciation every day, not just on a day and not just on a month. But they make everyone recognize whoever they are. As this month is African American History Month, but this council, this staff and this community recognizes everybody every day for like what they do and we appreciate that. So thank you.
Thank you. Our chairperson of Recreation Commission is a black, a black American. So, and Joe Harris and his family have been here for many years. So they really appreciate it. So and then there's Courtney, I forget her last name, Courtney. Okay. She, I know she's, 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 what is she's on some of the committees now or no? Is she on the safety committee or no?
Yes, and she's a community volunteer. She's on vacation. So her two sons, they, I talk with them daily while she's on vacation. So I'm, I'm not babysitting, they're adults, but we all stay in contact.
Oh, yeah, they're all appreciated. Okay, the next item is a consent calendar. The following items are presented for the city council approval without discussion as a single agenda item. Is there a council member that wishes to pull an item A, B, C, or D for further discussion? Any public asking to pull this either via email or nobody in the audience? So, okay. May then we have a motion to approve the consent calendar as noted?
I'll make a motion to approve the full consent calendar.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? Say aye. All ayes, all approve. Thank you. Next item is management reports. City administrator, information only.
I was instructed to be short mayor.
Okay.
Okay. I'll just go to, to a few items. The tentative meeting for April 5th at Leroy Park, the spring cleanup from waste management will happen. I don't have the exact times yet, but I will.
Did you say Leroy, Leroy Park?
Yes. It's not going to be at the school now.
Oh, they have their building going on over there. Okay.
Yeah.
And what day is that again?
It's tentatively April 5th.
Okay.
Also, there's a new bus stop and I'm not exactly sure the location, but mid-February for Escalante Meadows and I'll get more on that for a new bus stop.
That's the regular smooth circuit. That's not the school. No, okay.
And then.
Yeah.
And then also we'll be doing a full audit, probably in the fall of 2025 for the cannabis businesses. HDL will be assisting the Finance Department and myself. Let's see, the chief might go on to this, but the city received calls about sandbags and where they can find them at the fire department. And then the sand, of course, is across the street on the corner here. And that ends my report.
Okay, that's the corner of Abysmo and Ninth Street.
Yes, yes.
And the bags, where do they, where the sandbags, do they?
Yep, fire department.
Is there, is there a limit or? No, huh? Okay, okay. Okay. You have to bring your own shovel and stuff. Is it, or they leave one there or no? It's there. Okay, shovel's there. Okay.
In the woods. Okay.
Any questions of the city administrator from the council?
I have a quick question. Any updates on when we may resume activities for the Recreation and Parks Department and/or the regular Recreation and Parks Department meetings?
Oh yeah, the next item. I'm sorry, item nine is Director of Public Safety, Chief Cash.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, staff and community. The only significant two, two items. One is we're still preparing for the emergency preparedness training because we haven't received a lot of volunteers. So we're just moving ahead, getting together a training schedule. So we hope to have that in the next couple of months as we put everything together. And the only other aspect is we've been monitoring from the county. There's an evacuation warning that's been issued, but that's for the lake fire burn scar area. That's not going to affect the citizens of Guadalupe. We're expecting rain, heavy rains in parts of Santa Barbara, but, but not for Guadalupe. And there was a notice, citizens have called in concerning again, sand, to use sandbags. There is sand at the corner of Ninth and Abysmo, across the street from the fire department. Bags are with the fire department. You can come 24 hours, just ring the bell. And if, if they're still in the station, they'll be able to give you bags and their shovels to help you fill your bags if you need some. That is my report unless there's any questions.
Any questions of chief?
I had a quick question. Recently I read on the news about a credit card scamming here in Guadalupe and was wondering if our, if the city of Guadalupe receives any press releases that we can share with the community versus reading online.
We have not received anything. That was the state. We tried to reach out, but they didn't even tell us where it happened. Everyone kind of figured it out. But I was by that location last night because we had some unhoused individuals. So I was sit, I was talking with the owner of the property concerning that and some of the unhoused individuals because it's, it's getting colder at night. But I'll try to do a follow-up, see if I can get like any more information.
Okay, thank you. Next item is Human Resources Manager Sylvia, you're, you're up. Is your button pushed?
Talking to myself. Thank you, Mayor, Council, Staff and Community. There's a few updates with what was submitted previously, so I'll get into that. For public safety, we had some new applicants that were interviewed for the police officer slash recruit position. As a result of those interviews, a candidate has moved forward to the background screening process. For the fire engineer position, Chief has elected to shift our efforts and funding to secure firefighter position, which has led to the recent recruitment of a firefighter. Interviews were held and a decision is forthcoming. And the fire engineer will be a topic for later discussion and is no longer being advertised. Public Works, good news. The Director of Public Works will start tomorrow. The team was notified of his arrival and he will be formally introduced at the next council meeting. Recreation and Parks, another update. Offers were extended and accepted for both the Facility Rental Coordinator and Recreation Service Manager position, and they are both in the background process. Workers' Comp, no change. And we do have the appreciation breakfast for our fire and PD teams that will be held on February 26th. You are all invited, so please attend if you can. And also we will have the quarterly employee recognition luncheon in early March. You also have been invited to that as well. No other updates.
Any questions of HR person?
I just have a question. Last time you did your report, we talked about possibly getting some data on how quickly roles are posted and then filled. Is that a possibility to get at the next report? Sure. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll go to item number 12, which is 11, I'm sorry. It's a public hearing and and regarding this particular hearing, a council person has to recuse themselves to step away if they're within 500 feet of that particular appealing individual. You want to go ahead and you're ready to speak, go ahead.
No, I'm just, okay, ready to answer any questions.
Okay, so I'm going to recuse myself and the mayor pro tem will, will take over. She's been practicing diligently, so. And I will step out of the room. So give me a call when, when everything is settled. Okay, I'll be in the car.
Yeah, I was gonna say, don't, don't wait, don't wait outside.
Thank you, Pro Tem Mayor, City Council, Staff. Planning struggle with this one. We really enjoy much better approving things than having to deny things. So we don't find this pleasant, but it's, what planning works with is facts and that's what we do. We make findings based on facts. And so the facts of this one, we'll start with the background and it is an appeal of the Planning Department's decision to deny a zoning clearance application. And for background, Ms. Maryam Navarro, the homeowner, 5,000 San Piper Lane, has filed an appeal to the city council, appeal number 2025 0001 AP. The appeal is requesting that the city council overturn the Planning Department's decision to, to deny her zoning clearance application. The zoning clearance application is requesting approval of an unpermitted patio enclosure. The enclosure has already been built behind her home. The enclosure encroaches approximately four feet into the rear yard setback. Next slide, please. Municipal Code establishes the appeal procedure. Guadalupe Municipal Code, Section 18, Chapter 1880 specifies, any person may appeal to the city council. Any decision made by the planning director or designee, I'm the designee who reviewed the project. The municipal code goes on to say, the city council shall consider all the facts at the public hearing. And the city, the municipal code also specifies at the close of the public hearing, the city council may affirm, may deny, or modify the Planning Department's decision. So obviously the city council has some latitude there. If the city council does not take any action on the appeal within 60 days after. If the City Council does not take any action on the appeal, within sixty days after the filing, the Planning Department's decision shall be affirmed. Next slide, please. Little bit of chronology. Um, November twenty first, twenty twenty four, Planning Department receives zoning clearance application number twenty twenty four oh five three Z C, as we mentioned. On, uh, November twenty second, twenty twenty four, Planning Department staff reviewed the project. Um, noted that the, uh, enclosure encroached into the rear yard setback, immediate, immediately notified the homeowner that the wood enclosure did violate zoning setback standards. And that was the issue, um, as in the plan is in your packet, the, uh, the homeowner's plan, that zoning clearance application. And it's a sketch and it calls out a wood enclosure, and that was our concern, um, the, the construction of the enclosure. December twen- tenth, twenty twenty four, contract, uh, planning staff did visit the property. December thirtieth, twenty twenty four, contract planning staff denied zoning clearance application. Twenty twenty four oh five three season. Z C. And January sixth, twenty twenty five, the appeal was, uh, filed by the homeowner. I'd like to kind of just note that, um, the application, as you see, was filed November twenty first, twenty twenty four. Then the denial was January thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Point is, we don't take denials lightly. We did a whole lot of homework. We visited the site. Staff talked about it, including our permit technician. We all discussed it. We discussed the issues. In this case, again, it was a solid wood enclosure. The enclosure encroached four feet in the rear yard setback. A general rule of thumb, anything more than in that, and a four feet is about a, almost a thirty percent encroachment. If it was a smidgen, you might say, we might have, um, debated and waited and considered something else, some alternative. But again, it was a substantial encro- encroachment, uh, and so we did deny the application. Um, next slide, please. Um, and, uh, the homeowner is here, Mrs. Navarro is here. I'm gonna let her, uh, speak, uh, she can speak her position better than I, but in the, uh, appeal, it was noted that the solid wood walls were intended only to block the wind and cold air. So it was intended to function like a sunroom. There is no plumbing or heating in the enclosure. She might elaborate further, maybe no, uh, insulation either. Uh, but, and the wood walled enclosure presents no building code or fire code set, setback safety violation and creates no impact to the neighbors. And I did note that part of my homework, um, this is a zoning ordinance setback violation. I checked in with our Building Plans Examiner. There's a building and fire safety code setback and a zoning ordinance setback. There, sometimes, often they're parallel. In this case, they're different because this home backs up to a public street. The building and safety code setback is actually at the center of the public street. So she might have some point that there's no safety code violation, but there is a zoning violation, and that's planning's issue. Next slide, please. So what does the zoning ordinance say? Again, the property is loaded, located in the R one S P zone. The zoning ordinance says the setbacks for zoning are measured from the rear property line. For buildings and structures, the rear yard setback is fifteen feet. The, there's an exception. The exception, it says that a patio cover as defined by the Uniform Building Code is allowed a setback of five feet from the rear property line. So for buildings and structures, fifteen feet, a patio cover that meets the definition of by, by building code, five feet. Next slide, please. So what does the Uniform Building Co- Code say about, how, how does it define a patio cover? Uniform Building Code says a patio cover is a structure with open or glazed walls used for outdoor living purposes, not used as garages, carports, storage or habitable space. The exterior walls and openings for a patio cover should be, consist of insect screening, approved transparent plastic glass that meets building code specifications or any combination of the above. So the zoning code defines the patio cover and goes in the building code further clarifies what it means by that. Next slide, please. And that's the structure in question. Um, part of it is open, that does meet the code, but the most substantial part of the structure is, and I might say nicely done, it's a, it's a, but it's a wood enclosure. And, um, based on our definition, it's an addition. It's not a patio cover. It's an addition. An addition is a structure that should meet the fifteen foot setback, and that's the dilemma. Next slide, please. That's another angle. So the open part there is perfectly fine, that meets code. But, um, the rest of it, the, the, the major portion of it reads like an addition. Next slide, please. Um, again, the site plan or, uh, aerial vicinity map, just tried to etch in there. And again, this is measured by Google Maps, so it's not a hundred percent precise, but it's pretty close. The fifteen foot setback is, uh, that kind of dash line at the top. And that's for buildings and structures. You see the main part of the house is behind that fifteen foot setback. And that part of the structure down below extends, um, into that setback. It's allowed to go up to that lower red line, which would be five feet as long as it meets the open patio cover standard. So there's that chunk that extends in there, and, uh, that's the part that violates the, uh, setback in our view. Next slide, please. And again, um, we're not the experts on the building code, so we referred to, um, the city's Building Plans Examiner. We asked his opinion on a couple of things. We asked, what do you think? Is this a patio cover or a structure? Might be hard to read and to summarize, he says, as shown in the photos, the space is fully enclosed and can be used as habitable space. He goes on to talk about if it's habitable space, there's some structural things that have to be done and looked at to make it to make it a habitable space. Um, but it's close enough. In our view, it seems that the, uh, Building Plans Examiner, the expert affirms that it is a structure, not a patio cover. Um, again, that kind of an opening, if you, if you will. I asked, what about the building and safety code setback? Um, and in, in this case, he does say it does differ. So in this case, it does, again, violate our, in our view, the zoning setback. But, uh, that bottom, he says, um, that bottom's quote, he says, the building codes, uh, yeah, the building and fire code setback can be shown at the center line of the street. So it could be argued, I mean, if she was allowed to keep it, it could possibly may be made safe. But planning is not in a, in a position to approve it. If the City Council wants to. That's, that's the City Council's prerogative as far as we're concerned. Again, but planning is not in a position to approve it. And it's also, and we'll go on to summarize why it's awkward for planning. Next, next slide, please. True patio covered right down the street. That's, you know, and again, I'll assume it's a true patio cover. It looks like one to me. I'm not the building code expert, but that's by the definition, that looks like a patio cover, and that's one right down the street. Next slide, please. So that's the homeowner's property with the enclosure. There's another patio cover, neighbor right next door. You can see that's an open patio cover. That meets code. So it's doable. Next slide, please. So to conclude, in summary, the homeowner has advocated the enclosure is intended to provide protection from the wind and cold air. There's no plumbing or heating extended to the enclosure. And the homeowner acknowledges the zoning setback violation, but is advocating in this case, there's no building or fire code setback violation. Next slide, please. Planning Department's position, planning is concluded. Again, the enclosure violates the fifteen foot zoning setback by approximately four feet, twenty seven percent, pretty substantial in our view. Planning cannot approve such a substantial setback encroachment. The homeowner recognized the zoning setback violation, but knowingly constructed the unpermitted enclosure. And for planning, approval is considered unjust and unfair to homeowners who constructs additions that do meet zoning regulations. And one of the things that can, we're kind of united on in planning. And that includes Alice. We get too many things, too many people, let's say, somebody else did it and we're always defending, you know, and we, we look at things case by case. And, uh, we just have to be consistent, so that's our position. Next slide, please. There is an alternative, and the city attorney may help us with this, but, uh, another section of the code, the, um, states that, um, and this is in, uh, Chapter eight, um, in Guadalu- Guadalupe Municipal Code, Section eight fifty oh four O B. The code compliance, a, a hearing officer shall hear such matters that may be delegated or assigned to it by the City Council. In this case, since the structure is already built, the structure is a municipal code violation. Staff believes it is permissible for the City Council to delegate this matter to be heard by the code compliance hearing officer. So the zoning ordinance says that the City Council, um, could appeal, I mean, I'm sorry, affirm, revise or modify the Planning Department's decision. Or that other section says maybe you, if, if the council wishes, they could, um, turn it over to the co- code compliance hearing officer. And we'll talk about the options. Next slide, please. So based on the facts, the facts involved in this, uh, case, the City Council may uphold the Planning Department's decision to deny the appeal, delegate the appeal to be heard and acted upon by the code compliance hearing officer, permit the enclosure subject to meeting building and safety code setback standards. Again, I have no idea what that might take. They'd have to, uh, go through the Building Department, uh, Building Code Review and pay the associated fees. Consider possible modifications to the enclosure such as replace the wood walls with glass to become a bona fide patio cover. Again, I'm not sure what that would take. That would require the, the expertise of the building, um, code reviewer. Or the City Council could take no action. Next slide, please. Staff is recommending the City Council adopt Resolution Number twenty twenty five oh one two to uphold the Planning Department's decision to deny zoning clearance twenty twenty four oh five three to allow the unpermitted addition. And that would conclude staff's presentation in, uh, the homeowner, Ms. Navarro, is here to kind of present her understanding or her side of the.
Thank you.
We're available for questions if, if there are any. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Mr. Scott.
Yeah.
Do we have any questions from the council? I do. Go ahead.
This is a lot of information and this is not my area of expertise, so, uh, let me go with a question or two. If the council approves your denial, then what?
The structure is built, and, and that's one I might turn over to the city attorney because it would probably have to be demolished, but I'm not sure the procedure to get to that.
That was, that was gonna be the question, yeah. It has to happen to it.
Councilmember Viegas, members of the council. The city would have the discretion to create, uh, create a code enforcement case and pursue abatement. Um, the homeowner would also have the response, uh, the opportunity to submit proposed changes for building code or zoning staff, uh, planning staff to review.
Okay. There were plans for a patio cover or patio structure originally. Was, uh, it clearly defined that the patio structure needed to be have clear walls and all the things we discussed?
Um, thank you. Thank you for asking. Yes, and I, I, I tried to be brief with this and we elaborated in the staff report. I think it was January twenty third, twenty twenty three or something like, like, uh, there was a, a prior zoning clearance. The prior zoning clearance, twenty twenty three zero zero seven or something like that, approved an open patio cover. Planning signed off on that, uh, approval and noted on there, and we highlighted open sided patio cover, which is why we're, staff believes that, uh, the applicant was quite aware of the rules. So yes, we didn't elaborate on that in the slide presentation, but prior to the enclosure, there was an open patio cover approved. Yes.
And then a follow up question really quick. When was the structure built?
That, we, we'd have to ask the, uh, the homeowner. Yeah.
Thank you. Todd?
Um, if the council were to, uh, you know, deny your, your recommendation, then would that, that trigger then another application for a variance? Going four feet into the setback? In other words, it would, I mean, but then that by doing a variance, doesn't that require have certain conditions or requirements to say, you know, the other economic benefit or, or hindrance or whatever? There's no real anything that would structurally contemplate you approving a variance? I, I, I don't know if I'm explaining that, but it just seems to me like it would trigger another application of some sort in the form of a variance.
Excellent question. This is new to me. I'm gonna defer to Phil in a second because, uh, it is an excellent question in that we, it, we couldn't, it would still, there would still be a zoning ordinance setback violation. It would almost be, if the structure was allowed based on the fact that it could meet building code, we'd almost be ignoring the zoning setback because it still would be there. That violation would be there, and there is no variance we could issue. That's the way I see it. You can't issue a variance because there's no hardship. That's just a norm.
Hardship.
That's, that's, that's a normal piece of property.
Right, right. That's what I get, hardship.
Councilmember Crosslip?
Okay. My question is, looking at the pictures. If the windows were removed and the French doors removed and they put a s- uh, insect screening, would that still be considered an enclosed with the wood around it? Because we'd be, I'm just asking because, you know, like a sunroom is glass, but some sunrooms have a little bit of a wall underneath where it comes down with the windows removed, would it still be considered an enclosure of a patio?
Yeah, and, and this is another great question, but here, here's the issue. The definition is we, we should be primarily glass, and this is mostly wood. But what we would ultimately have to do, and that's where it goes to the building code. Those, those guys make the, make the definition. As a matter of fact, and again, I tried not to go into, you could only go into so much detail. They submitted a pre-op and, um, we said, no, this is not gonna work. Um, but if you want to run something by the Building Plans Examiner, the expert, we could do that. And, uh, again, that's more fee processing fees because that's the zoning or the, the city's fee schedule says that, um, additional review does require additional processing fees. Anyway, that said, um, it's up to the, the Building Plans Examiner to determine exactly how much glass makes an enclosure. They're the expert on that.
Todd?
Um, by, let's say the City Council were to deny your recommendation, would that contemplate a precedence?
Absolutely. In our view, it. Yeah, in our, in our view, it would, and that's, that's part of, that's part of the awkward position we're in. It would. Yes, it would. A- as we showed by, there's several examples of correctly constructed patio covers. It would set a precedence in, in our view. Yes.
Can it be like a domino, domino effect where everybody would like that?
That's, that's.
As we knowing Guadalupe, it's very cold and we all kind of want to be covered from those sand dunes. Um, can I get a little bit more information on the option number two where we delegate this appeal to the code compliance hearing officer?
Um, may I take that, uh, Councilmember Hernandez? Okay, thank you. Yes, I was the one that suggested that to, uh, Mr. Scott. And I did so because the language in the code said that the City Council may do one of the three things, affirm, deny or modify or take no action. I thought that meant, that's different than shall. Doesn't say you shall do one of those things. So I believe that that with the combine, the combination of the other language that the City Council can delegate matters to the code compliance hearing officer. Uh, I felt that there was a good legal basis for your decision to do that. I felt it was particularly appropriate in this case because it is an existing code compliance violation, although there's no case. Um, but it, it could easily have started out as a, a case, somebody could have complained about it and the case would have been uh, started and it would have been, would have gone to the hearing officer and that would have been perfectly fine. So you would have, I think, two options. You could just delegate the matter to the code compliance hearing officer. You could find that it's a code compliance violation and then delegate it to the hearing officer to see, you know, if there should be any abatement or other activity. Or you could refer, refer it to the hearing officer for an advisory opinion essentially and bring it back to you and you can make the final decision.
Philip, so the, the result of the hearing with the code enforcement hearing officer isn't binding, it's just advisory.
No, it could be.
It could be, but you're suggesting it would come back to council?
I'm not suggesting that. I'm giving you options. You could do, if you, if you're not comfortable delegating it to the code compliance officer for a final decision, you could direct him just to make his recommendation. But if you are comfortable, he is highly qualified and could do this easily. And I know from personal experience working with him that he would allow the applicant to explore other options and get it approved through building, you know, as part of a process. He wouldn't necessarily hold a hearing and make a decision and that's it. So you, you could feel comfortable delegating this decision to the hearing officer, but if you're not, then you could ask him for his opinion and come back with an advisory to you and then you can make the final decision from there.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any other additional questions from council? Okay, we are going to open this up for public comment at six forty six and I
I, I think you should let the applicant or the homeowner speak first.
The only, yeah, it's the only one we have.
Okay, sorry. I didn't know that.
If we can please, Maryam Navarro?
My element here. First time ever. So about a year and a half ago, we, well, I bought this property three years ago. I lived in Orange County, fell in love with Guadalupe. Came here to do a job for one of the salad packing companies. And when we bought the house, I didn't realize that I love the views because it backs to the mountains. But you can't really, you know, appreciate it. You can't go outside because it's so windy and there's a lot of sand, right? So we decided to ask for a permit to enclose it, not enclose it, to just have a open cover. But even like that, we realized that we still couldn't really enjoy it because it was still cold and windy. So I had no idea about any of the codes, the fifteen feet, none of that. I honestly thought, okay, well, it's my house, it's my property. I'm just going to build something. I asked my husband to build it. Thank you. So anyway, so we build it and I really didn't know about the fifteen feet or anything like that because there's enough room. I, we just didn't think about it. It's only my husband and I that live there. We are not planning or renting it or anything like Bill said. There's no plumbing, heating, insulation, none of that. We just wanted to just enjoy the outdoors without the elements. And then the other thing is if we would have built that patio with, if, now that I know, right, the fifteen feet ordinance rule, it would have left us with, I think about two feet. So, I mean, really nothing, right? Like it's so, and I listen, again, this is, this is so new to me. We, that was a labor of love. It's just my husband and I and our two dogs. And we just, I, I mean, listen, I'm hoping that I can keep it. It's beautiful. As you can see, I love Guadalupe. I wanna, I'm you know, I'm interior decorator at heart. And, you know, I hope that you guys see that this was not done by malice. I, I love things to look beautiful and so unfortunately, maybe I should have checked. I just, I don't know. I don't really know what I was thinking. But as you can see, it is really nice. It's very nicely done and what can I say? I, I just hope you, you, you look at, you had a chance to look at the pictures, right? And so I'm hoping that you guys approve it. I've seen other patios around the area and other things built. And I don't know if they're closer or far. I don't know. But again, you know, I hope you consider my, my request.
Thank you, Ms. Navarro. Any questions for Ms. Navarro?
I have a quick question. When was it built?
Oh, my goodness. I think the patio, the, just the, the cover, just the cover, I think. I want to say more than maybe a year and a half. It's been a while. Now we, now the enclosure, that's different, right? So first we did get permits for the cover. The enclosure, I think maybe like a year, a year, more or less like a year ago. So maybe the patio like a year and a half ago.
Or you built the patio as permitted first and then added on the walls. Is that correct?
Yes, yes. And we built, as you can see, there's just windows all around it. It still gets really cold in there, but you know, but it's beautiful in the summer for the couple of months that we can actually go out there.
Any additional questions? Thank you, Ms. Navarro.
Real quick, can I, just one more thing? And it backs to the, to the main, to the main street. So we have no neighbors except for our neighbors to the side, which they like it, but we don't have, there's nothing around it. So I beg you to consider it, please.
Ms. Navarro, we have one additional question for Ms. Roca Costa.
Is there a way you are willing to get it where what it says in the zoning ordinance? Because like I see you have those nice windows in there, but there's a way that they can have you restructure it. Would that be something you would be willing to do to make it where you don't have to have it removed?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I even thought about like the other one on the other side that has like the bigger windows. Yeah, I mean, I suppose there, there is a way. My husband's pretty crafty. He's a carpenter. He's checkable trays. I'm sure we can figure something. It's just, the views are so beautiful here in Guadalupe. It's just a shame that you can't appreciate if you're not out there, you know? But certainly, yeah, I mean, if listen, I'm willing, right? But the fifteen feet, to be honest, it would leave us with like two feet. You know what I mean? Yeah, but the windows, I'm sure something could be done.
Thank you. We have an additional question from Todd.
What would preclude you from putting electricity, plumbing, and insulation into the building? If they're allowed to do that, I would assume that would be granted as well.
Oh, me that I would do that? No, that's not, I don't know. I never even consider it because I'm not renting that. I mean, it's just my husband and I and our two dogs. Honestly, if anything, our two dogs are the ones who are spending the time there. Maybe it's like their house now. But no, I never, honestly, it never really crossed our minds, to be honest. It's just not. That was not our plan at all. Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Navarro.
Sure.
Now at six fifty three, we will be closing public hearing. What are the wishes of the council?
Be done in sense of of it being able to stay but be enclosed. What would she have to do? I know the walls would have to come down, but what would be the, would the wall be able to be like, say, two feet high from the concrete or would the glass have to go from concrete all the way up to the top? What would be needed?
Thank you. Great question. And that's where it goes back to the building plans examiner. Generally, planning would be out of it as long as that footprint remains the same. Planning's reviewed it. What would typically happen, talking to Alice, our permit technician. When you approve a structure like that, after it goes through planning review, you send it over to building code review. Now, what the building code examiner would say, I have no idea because this is owner built. As, as he mentioned in his notes, there's some structural footings that are required, so we could send it over, have Alice send it over to the building plans examiner. He might provide a laundry list. That's, but, but it's their expertise. It could be that maybe she needs to hire, you know, the guys who do ADUs and additions because there may be some footings required. So to keep it converted to say glass or something like that, it's a building code review. As long as it's in the same building footprint, planning is pretty much done with it. So it's just whatever the building code requires. And so they'd have to just prepare plans that meet the satisfaction of building code. And again, the city's fee schedule says that's cost recovery. So whatever the building plans examiner charges to fix it, I have no idea what that may be. It's cost recovery.
Yeah. Let me add on to that, Bill. That was my question too, Jean. But just to boil this down, so I understand what I'm voting on. Planning is saying, is denying this because in simple terms, this is not just a patio cover, it's an addition. And that addition, whatever you want to call it, requires other things to happen outside of planning.
Correct.
And you also said that if, if the council denied your denial, we're setting a precedent. This has not been done before?
Well, again, one of the questions we get and, and you know, with all respect to Ms. Navarro, that's the question she hits us with. Well, I saw one here and I saw one there. And so Alice in, in planning, in the building counter, well, I saw one there at five thousand Sandpiper, so it does set precedent. So if it's approved, there's that one, which I, I can live with. I mean, it looks nice. But we'd have to explain, well, she backs up to a street and building, you know, and met the building code, but it still violates the zoning code. Hope I'm not confusing that.
I got that.
Yeah, yeah. But, but, but yeah. Approval as it is, or again, with revisions to make it meet the definition of a patio cover, say with glass, would be a building code review. It would still violate, well, if it, if it was a true bona fide patio cover, it meets zoning as well. So if it was modified with glass and then the building code reviewer said, now it's a bona fide patio cover, it also meets zoning. Because zoning says you can have a bona fide patio cover in the setback. But if it's with the wood walls, then it does violate.
And then the issue is this fifteen feet.
Right, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Hope I was clear.
Yeah, you were. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scott, Councilmember Hernandez.
I just have a couple of comments. It is unfortunate that we have to be put in this position. But we do have experts that, you know, that are, that are hired to, to make the decisions and I think we have one, you know, decision to make on this. I mean, it could open up a lot of possibility either, either way, whatever the council decides. But I just like to remind myself especially that I'm not an expert in these matters, but we do have experts. So that's all I want to say.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead.
I know you guys were talking about if this created some, if this was going to create some precedence, right? You know, the reason why we built it is, I'm sorry, the reason why, thank you. The reason why we built it is we, we did see not only one, we saw a lot of them even closer to their wall. So I, I don't know, we just didn't think that then it would be a big deal. I thought it was, we didn't need permits or anything. But I have a picture of one that we actually saw that we thought, oh, that'd be great. It has, it's all mostly wood. It's got two windows. The only thing it doesn't have, and I can, I mean, I can show it to you guys, the only thing that it doesn't have is like the, the French door. But other than that, it's completely, completely enclosed with two windows.
Thank you, Ms. Navarro. I feel that that also kind of sent a precedent and so I do go.
Councilmember Hernandez, can I just clarify this issue about a precedent? Just the fact that there's illegal structures that haven't been abated by code enforcement in the city isn't setting a precedent because they're still subject to code enforcement. But if you approve this or if you deny, if you grant the appeal, then planning department won't be able to enforce the rules. We'll have to change them probably. And that's, that's what, and that's what is meant by being a precedent. It's not to deny that there may be other violations out there and of course, we could chief could send code enforcement out after every single one, if we had the resources or the desire to do that. But that's not usually how code enforcement works. The reason why this one came to light is because they actually asked for the zoning clearance and staff said we can't do it. So that's the difference between the fact that others exist and then establishing a precedent at, at this level, at the decision making level. I would like to offer one more alternative in terms of action. I presented two that you make a decision tonight, one way or the other, that you refer it to the code enforcement hearing officer to deal with essentially, either as an advisory or a final decision. And then the third option, which occurred to me, and you may feel a need to maybe just continue this for two or three meetings to allow the applicant to explore with the building department, other alternatives that perhaps could legalize the structure or some semblance of it. Because as Mr. Scott has made clear, this is a zoning code violation. He is not an expert in the building code. He doesn't know if it can be legalized under the building code. If it can, then zoning won't have any problem with it.
I have a question with that, Phil. If we were to agree with the decision that's been made by the planning department, do they, does that does that give them any more options to?
They have the same options that you would have, they would have if you continued this. The only, the only advantage is that you would be able to listen to what they did and see if there's something and then you could make your decision there. But they would still have the option to go to the building department and see if they could legalize it, even, you know, even if you deny it tonight. Or deny the appeal.
Deny the appeal. Got it.
Any additional questions? Okay, what are the wishes of the council?
If, if, let's say we were to grant this, it probably starts to set the idea that maybe we have to analyze our rear yard setbacks as a whole in the community.
I have several options.
Part of me wants to have our compliance, our compliance hearing officer go through the process of what they do, but I also want to give the homeowner the opportunity to get with building to see how she might be able to bring the structure to be legal with the zoning clearance.
If I just might interject, we could schedule the hearing before the code enforcement officer down the road. This isn't a life safety issue. I mean, it's not, doesn't need to be abated immediately. We could allow the, the the appellant to investigate the building code aspects. And then when the hearing set, she and her husband could present this to the hearing officer as some options and then hearing officer could continue the hearing to allow them to do that or dismiss the case if it's not a violation anymore. So that, if, if that's the concern that you want to give her a chance to do this before it goes to the, we could just delay setting of the hearing for thirty days or so.
Yeah, I would agree with, with what Bill was saying, that last option to allow her time to investigate and then schedule a hearing with the code enforcement hearing officer.
Yeah, well, I, I mean, I also agree with that. I just think that we, I guess back to my question that I just had was because I agree with the planning department. I mean, I would, I mean, if I had to vote right now, it was like, yes, the planning department is correct. I agree with that, period. That's my stance on this. So, but I do also have compassion and want to make sure that we can do something great for the homeowner if possible. So if we do nothing tonight except So if we do nothing tonight except extend this, or we could vote to uphold the planning department's decision, does, do those options cut her off from anything either? I mean?
Uh, not really. I mean, the same options available if she wants to keep the I mean, at this point, she's going to have to go to the building department regardless. If you basically deny this, the the only option to legalize it would be to go to the building department and figure out a way to legalize it or get a permit to demolish it.
Which is the same option, I mean.
Yeah, it's just that the the offer about sending it to the co-compliance hearing officer is just to allow another forum to work this out. Um, rather than just leave the homeowner to their, the homeowners to their own device. It's the same result in the end, the same work's going to be required. It's just that there may be a little more hands on with the delegating the handling of it to the hearing officer. That that's why I recommended it because this is what he does.
Because for me, I would, I agree with the planning department. I would be open to hearing the recommendation of the code compliance officer. And I would like to give him more time, so. So I don't think it has to be decided tonight, but I mean, but I I would be interested in, uh, you know, passing this information to code compliance. But again, I I agree that the planning department is making the right decision in denying that. So that's my opinion, but I don't know how to get there. That's my motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. What, what is the motion?
Clarify too.
Oh, no, no, go ahead.
I just, I, I mean. I'd make a motion tonight, um, just to to delegate the appeal to be heard and acted upon by the code compliance hearing officer as a recommendation, not a final.
Okay.
I'll second that. All those, yeah, all those in paper? Oh, roll call. Councilmember Costa Junior.
Hi.
Councilmember Fornes.
Hi.
Councilmember Legas.
Hi.
And Pro Tem Mayor Hernandez.
Hi.
Take a quick moment to grab the mayor. You did sound good.
I won't be here next week either. Okay, thanks. Thank you. Where are we? I don't know. I'm twelve, okay. All right, the regular business. Uh, thank you all for we're going forward. The capital campaign committee and request to Guadalupe Community Action Coalition to serve as fiscal sponsor for the campaign. Tom.
This is Tom Bernway. Can you guys hear me okay?
We can. I had to mute you before, but um, and I turned off your video too, so. Sorry, Tom.
That's okay. No worries, no worries. So we did do a staff report. You do have a staff report in front of you. There are uh, two, three subjects that are uh, with you. One is um, determining, well, actually, you should back up here. Sorry, I'm I'm out of line. So the uh, council are aware that in the council meeting on uh, January the uh, fourteenth, it was um, the council asked uh, for us to put out the word that we were looking for uh, committee members. Uh, we've done in your uh, staff report, you will see that there are uh, a spreadsheet with those people that completed the form indicating their interest in being on the committee. I also placed in that staff report the blank forms so that you have an idea of all of the questions that were asked of the community. Um, the flyer that was created was sent out uh, via email uh, by council member Fornes. Uh, in addition to that, uh, the flyer was placed on uh, if not most of the uh, Guadalupe Facebook pages. Um, so uh, it, I think for uh, the short period of time, I think we got the word out pretty quickly. Um, tonight, we are asking for the council as a follow up from the January fourteenth meeting uh, to read, to determine what you think the size of the committee should be. Uh, of those that completed the application, and I believe you have eleven people that have signed up uh, to determine how many of those should be on the committee based on the size you determine the committee should be. Uh, outside of what the council asked to be done at the January fourteenth meeting, I have asked the council to consider once they determine who should be on the committee uh, to maybe determine whether you want to name a chairperson for the committee. A chairperson would be very valuable to get the committee up and running and determine the priorities of the committee and maybe assigning work to the uh, committee members. Uh, I think that's uh, pretty much my side of it. I appreciate if you have any questions. Um, I'm happy to answer them.
Um, Tom, this Philip Sinko, did you mention about the request to the?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Um, in addition to that, uh, for process wise, it was uh, Philip and I had a conversation and we determined that it's probably a good idea for uh, and not only a good idea, but also one that would work better is to use the um, city's nonprofit, the Guadalupe Community uh, Action Commission to use them as the fiscal agent. And what this means is, is as people make donations, the donations would be to that nonprofit. That nonprofit would then in turn uh, pass the money on to the city when there is a, when there is an uh, an invoice to be paid. Um, so for the purposes of making sure that the money is used in a, in an appropriate way, uh, the city would say, we have an invoice for this amount. The nonprofit would then transfer that money so that the invoice was paid. And that would be the process throughout this, throughout this uh, area. Um, there is probably a need based on the fact that, and I think you'll see this in the staff report, there is a need to have some kind of a percentage of the money coming in to help the nonprofit administer this uh, and be the fiscal agent. So have I missed anything on the uh, fiscal agent portion of this?
Uh, not exactly. The only thing is the, I would term, I would use the term fiscal sponsor as opposed to fiscal agent because they are not um, an agent of the city.
Okay.
But it's, it's a technical thing, but.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's all.
Thank you, uh, Tom.
Welcome.
My first uh, reaction is to find out, first of all, you know, you have a, you you mentioned eleven and I does this not include councilperson Fornes? You are a member, but.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But I just.
Well, I count, I count eleven without you.
Yes. Yes, apologies. The the list I sent you, I assumed that because she was already voted and she already raised her hand, that um, that we were, we wasn't including here because we were picking from the, from the eleven. Um, she also didn't complete the application, so.
And and I know that you were going to mention another.
Maria, uh, there was another person that submitted um, an application after the closing, which was uh, it was a tight closing date. Um, I don't know if we have the ability to decide if we want to allow that person to be considered or not, so.
And just for clarity, that there was no official close date. The council did not uh, ask for it to be closed. There was a suggestion of a close date. And it was mentioned to the community that there was a close date.
Right.
And then that person submitted an application after that.
Great. I would like to hear that name and also a a last name for Tina, because I know that's not me.
Take a guess.
Yeah, take a guess. They're retired now.
Starts with M.
Tony.
Yes.
And that's Maria Elena, I don't know her last name. I forgot her last name.
Does she used to live and work in Los Amigos?
Yes.
Oh, awesome, okay.
Yes, she did.
Maria what? Ma- Maria Elena Garcia.
Garcia, yeah.
Yes.
She lives town, so.
Yes, she's in town.
She is in town, yes. But just for clarity also, she also went through the um, enterprise program. The micro enterprise program.
I have one additional question. Were these applicants invited um, to to today or made aware of today's meeting?
Yes, well, they were made aware of it from the standpoint of the flyer.
In the pool. So if if we approve uh, Maria Elena, uh, then that would make thirteen, correct?
That's thirteen people.
Okay, with including you.
Including myself.
Yeah. Um, any comments so far?
On the question of size, uh, if, let's say, what did you say? We have thirteen people names now? So if we said ten, that that was a, an agreeable number, how how does one select from the list? Uh, do we use criteria? Do we close our eyes and point? Uh, or do we simply say that's a reasonable number and just allow everybody to uh, participate on the committee?
How many people are normally on a committee like this? Is there any, I mean?
Well, personally, it's a huge undertaking, so.
Yeah, I agree.
I think to me, uh, my personal thing is those that did apply are interested. And you're going to have a, a a whole different element in terms of who can, who has experience and who doesn't, or maybe not doesn't, but there, they have some commitment to this project because it's it's noted that they did, you know, did apply, so. Jean, any comments?
I mean, the other thing is to, um, if we were to, let's just say, allow thirteen people on the committee, not everybody can show up at the same time, so, and everybody has different strengths and different things that they contribute, is my thought. There was nobody on the application um, information that stood out as I didn't want on the committee. Everybody seemed great.
Is that a motion? I'm sorry, go ahead. Um, okay, you're right. Mayor Pro Tem pointed it out. Sorry, please come up. No, you're not, no, I'm sorry.
Hi, everyone. My name's Mira. Um, I just, a couple of quick comments and questions. I fully support the capital campaign committee for the Royal Theatre, but I do have some questions, suggestions and concerns. Sorry, my phone, of details included in the recommended report for tonight. So based on the limited number of responses, and I do view eleven or twelve as limited considering the undertaking that this is and how many people have expressed interest in the past. And from comments that have been made to myself and other community members, I believe that the lack of specific details currently available about the full scope of what this committee will look like and the time commitments have kind of deterred interested individuals from applying at this time. So I would love to see the council approve an initial installation of committee members, but not cap that amount of members tonight. And instead, like, get an understanding of the structure of the committee, the potential asks and the time commitment, and then give the ability for that council to come back to the council once they have a more comprehensive understanding of the undertaking to elicit further members should the initial committee feel it's necessary to achieve their goals.
I think you're you're pointing out the details because what, you know, what are the, what are the tasks? What, when you're going to meet? How are you going to meet?
Exactly, and that was listed as a question or a comment on one of the um, applications was, you know, I am busy, so what would this really look like to be a member? And I think that's important to also just get an understanding of where people are at. Um, oh, sorry.
Good, sorry, I was, if you don't mind if I could respond to that. Though, though, there is an, there is an expectation that once the committee is formed, that they will go back to council with that process for the council's comments and approval. So the idea was the committee would meet and come up with what do we want to recommend? How are we going to run this committee? What are the things that we need for this committee? All of those were meant to be the next step. And it's one of the reasons why I highly recommend that the city council tonight pick a chairperson so that they can make sure that that starts and the process gets going. But the theory was there was going to be a third council meeting to talk about the process. The reason for that, and Philip can jump in here, is some of the things that will be decided, for example, I'll give you an example. What gifts is the committee going to give for donations? So for example, if the committee is saying, we would like the back of the chairs in the theater to be allowed to put plaques on those theat, on those uh, chairs, that would require the council to approve that since the council owns it. So the theory was the committee will get together and come up with all of those pieces that the council needs to approve and then go to the council. Sorry, Mira, I just wanted to clarify that.
No, no, and that's totally my understanding as well. I'm just suggesting that council not necessarily cap the amount of people that will sit on the committee tonight without having this details of the scope or whether there might be subcommittees, you know, selling chairs might be its total owned subcommittee and the community would want to go and say, would you have any interest in being part of just this subcommittee on the capital campaign committee?
I I agree with that, and I also think that perhaps by saying, hey, everyone, you can join the committee, people might drop out, you know, depending on the time commitment and things like that. So I would also agree that it may be the committee is not chosen tonight, but perhaps the first meeting of all those that are interested be we can connect and see if the time commitment is something that we're all, I mean, I'm in it to win it, so. So whatever we decide, but you know, for those from the public.
We have a chairperson.
No, no. No, uh, but I, but I do think that we should all um, at least get those thirteen together, including myself. Um, perhaps, you know, email, have an email thread. I don't know how that goes, if we need to keep that a record. But um, make sure that those thirteen, if we're going to allow those thirteen are actually committed to the committee or, like you said, Mira, to be on a subcommittee or something to that effect.
Perfect. And then I just have a couple of questions about the fiscal sponsor aspect of it. So the first one is, has the GCAC been approached about doing this and expressed both an interest and a confidence in their ability to do so? Um, would the GCAC be bringing in additional board members or add an advisory board to assist with this project? Should it be approved tonight? The report mentions an admin fee of three to five percent of funds raised. Will that percentage be decided on tonight if this is approved? Um, also, forgive me, I'm not great at math. Um, also, forgive me, I'm not great at math, but five percent of a million dollars would be fifty thousand dollars, which is a significant amount of money. Would the G C A C be using these funds to hire an experienced professional to manage any admin tasks related to this project? And would the G C A C have any limitations on how these funds are spent? Um, the report also kind of mentioned the necessity of the G C A C needing these types of funds in order to successfully set up their own organization. And I do understand that that's really important, but I also think every dollar going towards this project is also really necessary and important. So I feel like perhaps rather than a percentage, it would be better to say that any necessary costs accrued by this organization would be covered from funds.
I think, I think we need a copy of what you're talking, what you're saying, because it's a, I I think we have some preliminary um, task, which is that basically to say yay or nay to having this, you know, the 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 people that did apply to say, yes, you're on the committee. I think it may be premature to actually have a chairperson uh, right now, because then there's there's someone looking at time constraints, uh, and and so it would take a, you know, meeting of this group, uh, be it email or or Zoom or whatever to actually take what you're ta- talking about, what you're speaking on, because those are things that are really detailed that I don't think we can answer, you know, right now. But they're relevant, very relevant questions, so. I think the task before us today is to look at these individuals to say, what are we, do we want to incorporate them into a a uh, a committee that has uh, has openings that you can, if somebody else wants to come in or somebody drops out, you know, they're more than willing to, you know, participate. I think you also need a core of individuals from this group that are willing to sit and talk about the details that that you mentioned and more. So.
I have more more comments, sorry.
Please, no, no, no.
And then Melanie, I'll let me, I'll, I'll, I just, I'll be brief. Um, so I think, yeah, I think it would be good if, and I would take it upon me just as council member to um, perhaps email everybody and set up a meeting initially. I am not volunteering to be any sort of cuz I think there's more qualified people, but I, you know, I can do my best to organize that. Um, and then my next thought would be to, just cuz my background, uh, you know, is in business, is just to do like a business plan for the committee or something to that effect, um, that we could present to the council. But I think the thirteen of us, I tho- those that are, you know, solid could get together and kind of make that plan, but but I don't know, I, yeah, I wouldn't necessarily wanna make a decision on uh, the Guadalupe Community Action Coalition yet either. Um, or anything else, so, but but except the next small step.
Thank you all. Um, I, yes, I agree what what Mira was saying and what um, Whitney was saying. And I do happen to know two uh, women incredibly qualified, and one I believe sent you, Whitney, a an email with questions, and she never got anything back. And so she didn't fill out the form. I told her to fill out the form today and uh, Dina Zemarin. And but she, Z uh, D E N N A, and then Z A M. Anyway, she, uh, I I asked her to do that, and I also know that Brooks, uh, the owner of Guadalupe Social Club is I spoke to her today, she's very interested, she didn't have, she didn't see any of this anywhere. She's very, she's very busy. And uh, I do know some other people that were gonna apply, but saw the Facebook thing of it's done by February fifth, so I please don't close it up, because a lot of people don't know about it, and some really qualified people.
Thank you. Um, just a brief understanding, I think it's, um, we're creating a committee, but on top of that, they are able to go ahead and solicit volunteers because this committee is gonna find needs, they're gonna find issues, and that's gonna be their um, their mission to go find volunteers. Just because we have a capital c- committee doesn't mean that additional volunteers can't come on um, moving forward. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, that is correct. It also, um, there's nothing, uh, there's nothing in the staff report that said anything about capping the members tonight. It it really said, we're gonna appoint people. There had to be a cutoff date to get you some names, okay? I mean, there's no problem with that. Um, the, I would like to just talk about the G C, the the G C A C thing. Um, we're not asking for that to be a decision that they are going to be.
Just to request it.
We're gonna request and see if they're interested, cuz they may they may say no, for all we know. And if they say yes, we're interested, then we're envisioning an M L U process where uh, I'm, since I'm, as you both, as you know, I'm on both sides of that. Conflict waivers in place, I will be drafting that M L U. Um, and then it'll be negotiated back and forth. So we wanted to get that process started, and that's why we're asking it right now. But not to take action on it. It it'll come back to you and and there's gonna be several steps along the way. Thank you.
Awesome. I did, I have worked for non- um, previously for a nonprofit for ten years and three to percent, three to five percent is actually very common for nonprofits to request an administrative fee.
And the G C A C is looking to expand its numbers from five to seven.
Who are your members?
Um, Garrett Matsura, um, Dr. Handel, um, Michael Jimenez, uh, myself and Janice.
Okay. So right now, our task is to look at the individuals that have applied and and use that as the core, perhaps. With an open end in terms of people, like you mentioned, some of them may come in that, and like Melanie mentioned, there's other people that are interested in it. And then the second thing is to say, to ask the G C A C if they're willing to do that, so.
Would, would you be interested in getting the thirteen of us um, established and with plans?
I would love to, but I'm leaving in three days for New Zealand for over a month.
No, okay.
I, I.
Will you be available by email?
No.
Not at all?
No.
Okay.
I'm biking and hiking and.
Good for you. Um, when, and you, but when you come back, you're still interested in being a part of it.
Oh, of course.
Okay.
Hundred thousand percent, but now your, your timings.
You, yeah, you can't give that up. No, I understood completely.
But I will send you the information about Dina and.
I didn't get that. Um, I had, I sent that out to about five hundred people. So I got a lot of, uh, my inbox is full of returned messages.
Yeah, I would, I'd love to help, but I'll put together the next one, but not.
Okay, no, I can take it, um, take that on. But yeah, I think, um, yeah, if we could just see where that core group is, um, I don't have any experience like with putting together a committee, but I'd be happy to attempt it. Yeah. I say that like, the next steps for a committee, I I, the committee, we got people to do. Yeah, I think uh, twelve members for this committee is a great, or thirteen, is a great start, and then moving forward. Um, you guys have the opportunity to uh, solicit more volunteers, cuz we obviously know that we will need more volunteers for this project.
Okay, what are the thoughts on on selecting a a a chairperson? I, I don't either, yeah. Premature, okay. And then, so we could basically say, yes, on the individuals that applied, and then keeping an open end on that, and then also asking the G C A C if they will entertain an M L U to uh, work with us as the as the corporate um, entity fiscal, there you go, thank you, fiscal sponsor.
Yeah, I'd be open to asking them, but with no commitments on either side.
Right.
Yeah.
Do you need a motion on that?
Yes, please.
I mean, let's just, someone says, I move and I got the motion.
Make a motion to do the thing that we just discussed.
Okay, perfect, got it, thank you.
I'll second.
Okay.
Any discussion from anywhere? Say aye?
Aye.
All ayes. Thank you all. Thank you, Mira. You have that in writing? All your details, okay, okay. The next item, uh, thank you all for that one, that's, that's a good one. Uh, item thirteen, thirteen, regu- business thirteen, raising community awareness about illegal fireworks.
Yes, uh, mayor and council and staff. At the January fourteenth and twenty eighth city council meetings, um, Ms. Deborah Sykes addressed the city council and presented a written letter, it's it's attached, cheers, attachment one, asking them to approve a flyer that she designed urging residents not to use illegal fireworks and to include it it as an insert to the city's utility bill mailing in March twenty twenty five. And there's a several examples attached in there as well for attachment two. But over the past two years, the Public Safety Department has mailed out a fireworks flyer for attachment three that the chiefs put together. Um, discussion, um, staff does not recommend, this is after correspondence with the the city attorney, that the council authorized, including Ms. Sykes flyer and the city utility bill mailing, and has not included this as an option for the council's action. The city attorney strongly recommended against this because of the potential consequences of doing so. And this is a lengthy report, and I I won't go into all of it, but um, according to the turn, city attorney, the city's utility bill is solely for the benefit of the city. It is uh, a non-public forum, which means that the public has no legal right to use it for otherwise constitutionally permitted expression. The same is the case for the city's website and social media pages. If the city council allowed third parties to insert their their own flyers into the city's utility bill, the city would be required to allow any other constitutionally permitted messages to be included in other utility bills. The city attorney strongly advises not to allow the city's utility bills to become a public forum, although we could take some of the ideas from that flyer and incorporate it into our own or the chief's own. Um, so there's some options that were laid out here for the council with 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 the idea of not including her flyer, but to authorize public safety, A, um, uh, public safety staff to create a new flyer urging city residents not to use illegal fireworks and spend additional city funds, which really we have in the budget already, to print it and insert it into this uh, utility bill for mailing in March twenty twenty five, or direct public safety staff to revise or amend the information on the current illegal fireworks, which is a flyer which is attached, uh, is attachment three already included in the utility billing, bill mailing on an annual basis, and or authorize both A and B or D, take none of these actions, and E, additionally consider approving um, an external link, which there's a lot of discussion on that. I'll let Philip kind of explain that on a policy the city approved um, for Guadalupe Illegal Fireworks Team, if council concludes it's consi- consistent with the city's external linking policy on the website.
Uh, thank you, Tom, uh, Todd. Uh, just one thing before I talk about the website. Um, the chief pointed out uh, that, well, he doesn't agree with the wording that was in the staff report, which I I drafted that part uh, about how the funding for the flyers already been appropriated in the Public Safety Department's budget. It wasn't specifically appropriated for that purpose. Um, I I I meant it in the sense that in the past, the the Public Safety Department has paid for that cost, and they, that's been appropriated in their budget in that sense, but it would, there was no much specific funding for the flyer. It would be out of existing public safety uh, resources and any dollar spent uh, on that would take away from other public safety needs. So I just wanted to clarify that, cuz uh, I didn't ask the chief's permission before I let that report out, so, my bad. Uh, the other thing about the 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 linking issue is that was just as an option in case you are uh, supportive of the message and 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 not opposed to providing the public with information about this organization. I quoted the relevant language. We we still have not crafted a full-blown website policy, but we did the chief will remember, we did this because there was another group that wanted to have its messaging available for the the public, and this came from a more comprehensive policy. Uh, it provides a way for you to authorize an external link to this organization if people are interested in getting more information about it, but it does not constitute an endorsement of the message, and it doesn't create a public forum. So you could take no action on the flyer and and still authorize that.
Well, first I wanna say that I don't believe this is as far as allowing individual uh, groups or whatever to include something in the water bill. This is an addition to the Fourth of July flyer that goes out, and I designed the first one, by the way. The very first one that went out. I can remove the gift, the Guadalupe Illegal Fireworks Team uh, information from it and make it a non uh, private group to, so to speak. I believe that we need to stop the purchase of illegal fireworks to deal with this situation better. I believe that that's the way we should approach this, because once people buy fireworks, they will use them. So maybe the solution is to send out uh, something that discourages the purchase of them in advance, and instead of doing the one in June that nobody reads anyway, you know, cuz they've already got their fireworks. Okay, um, as far as the website link, depending on what your policy is on that, I don't have a website currently. I need to do, if I did that, I can do that. And if I did that, I would need to research domain names and so on like that, cuz probably gift is already taken.
I'm sorry, I didn't know you didn't have a a website.
Okay, that's okay. And you know, I think that we need to consider the big picture here. That's the biggest, that's the most important thing. And this year was really bad. It was worse than most of the years before we got the ordinance passed five years ago. Um, the fireworks started in May, and they went through August and September. I posted my first social media post in September, and I was doing it every two to three weeks uh, on Nextdoor and any Facebook page that would let me do it. Um, and there was some improvement. I don't know if I can take credit for that, but there was some improvement, and we wanna keep that momentum going. So I ask you to approve this. Anyway, I think that's about it for me, so.
Okay, thank you.
I understand there's additional cost and so on. Um, and that's why I created two different versions of the flyer, you know, one third page, whether it costs more to cut it, cut a third page or print a full page and fold it, I don't know.
We're not talking a great deal of money.
I don't, I have no concept. How much is it? I mean, at ballpark?
It was a hundred and fifty dollars, I think.
Two oh eight percent.
A hundred and fifty dollars to print, to print and cut all the pages?
We don't, we can't cut the pages, they have to go in as this thing.
So, so a hundred and fifty dollars to print all of the pages? Well, I can help with that. I'm retired, I got time. You need me to run a copier? My husband's a copier technician, I got two laser printers at home.
And and just to clarify the city's position, Mr. Mayor, um, it is, the the message is the the message is is fine if the council endorses the message. If that's something that the city council endorses, it's fine to to basically use that flyer without the identifying information. Uh, that's the key, and that's the the thing, we we can't have that organization using our forum, but if it's a city message because the city council believes it's appropriate, that's a different story.
And now you said it was a total cost of a hundred and fifty dollars to print the.
Well, our experts here, our finance director.
It was, say that again?
It's really insignificant in terms of the cost.
About two, two hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Okay, two hundred dollars to print the materials, then it's you have the person sitting, standing by the copy machine, right? Tell me what the other expenses are.
It's in the staff report. Just take a look at there, it's in the fiscal impact, okay?
All right.
Okay, and it's insignificant. It's just a matter of us, uh, authorizing, like, let's mention, A, authorize public safety to create a new flyer using urge the city residents to not to use illegal fireworks. You're not gonna stop them from buying it. It's, that'd be nice, but you're, it's, that would be another story. And direct, excuse me, and direct public safety to revise or amend the information on the current illegal fireworks flyer already included in the utility bill. Um, or C, authorize both A and B. Do we have a, any com- comments from the council and direction?
Yeah, I'd like to, um, I mean, let me back up. I have candy in my mouth. This issue comes up uh, every year.
This issue comes up every year, all the council meetings, Fourth of July. And I think the issue, at, at least as I recall, is on Deborah's flyer here. The, the personal effect of the, of the fireworks, legal, actually illegal or illegal. So it, it seems reasonable to combine what, what chief's flyer is. And because it's important to show that the, the find, the illegality and all of that, you don't want to change that. But also add in the, the personal effects of just fireworks in general. But then my question is, if this go, if, if we do that, if the council approves that, and we, we send that out in March, is something gonna go out again right before Fourth of July as a, as a more current reminder?
That was, that was the option A and B. Option C on your recommendation, if you wanted to do both. You could do both or you could do one or the other.
I do like the message and I do think we should put more, more, not information, but more reminders out there. I wouldn't mind putting a combination of Deborah's flyer in a March mailing and then also doing one closer to Fourth of July. I like the, the message. As Amelia said, you know, regarding who it affects. So I wouldn't, I would kind of be on an, in an A and B, or I guess a C level as far as making another flyer that would promote the message that Deborah is sending.
Jean, any comments? You good? You seen it? Is there a motion? What is our motion now? A, B, or item C, authorize both A and B?
I'll make a motion for item C with the possibility of getting the first flyer to be more in line with Deborah's message.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion?
All those in favor of the motion?
And say aye?
Aye.
All ayes. Thank you, Deborah. And chief and staff.
Okay.
Yeah. I say it one way, you say it another way, but it's the same. It's the same. Right here.
Gonna find my agenda. No, no, I've got it here somewhere. I got too many papers. That's right. I got, thank you ladies. Get, get my act together. Yeah, item fourteen, future agenda items. There are, go ahead.
Oh, yes, adoption of the city council norms and protocol and goals. That would be one item at the next meeting. And then wastewater treatment plant collection grant authorization. And then Judy's gonna have to help me with this one.
Farmers market.
Yeah. Yeah. Guadalupe Business Association Farmers Market, C O C H E S A.
Thank you. I also emailed you in regards to proclamation for the outdoors. I will resend that to you. I think that was coming up in March as well.
In March?
Okay.
In the future, there's, there's what's called the Point South Marines Preserve Proposal.
And that's not, well, we can do that later on and probably in March sometimes, but there's a, there's a move to actually create a preserve from Point South through Mussel Shoals to commercial fishing. So there's a, the, the group wants to present it, give an update on the, to the city council and the GBA on what's proposed. Anything else? Okay, announcements, council activity reports. Mr. Costa, anything?
I attended poetry night this past month. It was a great time. It was a full house. There is no seats left for anybody and it was really exciting to be in community. I shared a poem and it was very frightening once I got home.
Can you say it again? Can you? No.
And then I also am a part of the Guadalupe Immigration Coalition and hoping to create some goals to help with our community. Thank you.
I attended the multicultural committee, their third meeting at Mary Bjorn this past, past week. And the major topic was how to get Black History Month communicated to all the students. So that, there were a, a group of teachers there and they came up with some, some reasonable ideas. What's very interesting is, is in all these meetings, you hear the teachers say they don't have time to do anything. You, you talk about a, a little project where you may have to make copies of this or, you know, whatever. They, no, I'm sorry, yeah, they, the person who chairs this is the one, she's very good, Linda Reynoso, kindergarten teacher. And she says, I don't want to put a lot on you teachers, because I know you have no time. And I, I, I hear that from other teachers. But one thing, and chief, I wanted to ask you this. One thing that was mentioned after, the sort of an aside was the issue of immigration. And one of the teachers said that teacher, excuse me, parents were concerned about bringing their kids. Some, some parents were concerned about bringing, bringing their kids to school with ICE and immigration and everything else. And so I guess my question to you is, did, did you and Dr. Handel have a discussion about this? That, because I asked the question, what, what's the district, district's position on this? And I got a very kind of loose answer and, and I didn't pursue it, because that really wasn't the topic of, of the committee meeting, so. But I wanted to ask you, when, when all of this issue came up, did you have a discussion and, and a particular plan or anything?
No, we have not had a discussion. We're sticking with what's our legal requirements to do. We are not federal officers. We're not immigration officers. We will arrest individuals that are committing crimes and process them accordingly. So we, we will not step outside of our authority.
Well, that's what I'm asking. What you just said, was that communicated to the district or that isn't our responsibility?
Well, no one from the district has, has asked me.
Okay, okay. That answers it. Thank you.
There has been a lot of communication from the district to the parents. I don't know if you've been privy to any of that. Just because my daughter's in school, so I don't know if you want me to forward any of that to you? Okay, I could pass it along. Yeah, I, it's, it's a lot of good info, but you could sort through what's relevant.
I think it's a strong message when I guess the chief makes a public comment or goes into these spaces where we know that our communities' concerns are arising. Recently, the sister at Guadalupe Church mentioned that there was an ICE officer enter and he asked for the restroom, but once he was done with the restroom, he went around the church. And so that made a lot of families fear and not wanting to go to church. So I think maybe some open communication to help settle those fears down.
Did that person have his identification on his jacket or anything or? The sister?
The sister nun from the church, Sister Norhisa.
Okay. Please.
We just finished up the winter season and my Guadalupe girls basketball team, eight nine-year-olds. We lost the whole, but, but the, we didn't win one game, but those girls played so well and it was my first time coaching. We had a really good time. There were two teams in that age bracket for the Guadalupe girls and they're all Mary Bjorn students. So it was really good experience and the boys and girls clubs does a great job with basketball league, so.
Was that here? They played, where'd they play this?
So they played all over. They, they, we practiced here at Leroy Park in, in the gym and then we played mostly in Santa Maria. So yeah, but next, next season, next season we might get a win. It, we, yeah, every, every game, but that was the final game of the season. But even knowing that we had a tough, we're gonna have a tough game, that we are playing the second seeded team in the tournament. Those girls put their whole heart into everything. So it was such a good experience and we had our pizza party at two guys and that was great, so.
Mayor, if I could briefly mention, if any individual, if anybody comes in contact with residents that need help filling out passports, we have, I, I have identified two organizations. One is California Farm Worker Foundation and I'll leave those paper materials in the back.
Thank you. Food Bank, we had, that's last Thursday in the rain. The most families that we've ever seen was, the, the, as, as people know, we had 270 families. And the cars, there's, there's cars that line up from Fourth Street. They come down Abysspo Street, turn left on Ninth Street, which is here. Turn right along the railroad tracks and then go through into Senior Center. So there was probably about eighty new people. There's a lot of, a lot of new individuals. And according to People Self-Help Housing, we thought that because of immigration, it'd be a, a lull and it's just the opposite. People aren't, the, people aren't working. And by the way, there was, we passed out, and I don't know which organization passed out the little red cards that talked about in English and Spanish, how to proceed when someone asks you questions about your legality and, and what we did at the Food Bank, the Food Bank puts out a, a notice to us that if, if an ICE agent wants to come into an area that is designated as a, say, say the Senior Center, we have a sign up there that says, this is for volunteers and period. And if they have, if they come in, if an ICE agent comes in and says, I want to go inside, it said, what, do you have a warrant? And if that warrant isn't signed by a judge, they can't enter. So we, our sign says that. It said, just beyond this point, nobody other than volunteers can come in. And you can put me in jail for this, but we, if we, if ICE came in and disturbed or started questioning our people on the line, we would bring them into the building and have them stay inside the building. That didn't happen, thank God. And we saw, again, that it was the busiest that we've ever seen, both walk, walk up and also in the cars. So thanks to the volunteers, it's about 25 volunteers. And in the rain, and thanks to the fire department and the police department for being there under the umbrellas and getting, getting wet, so. And also the chief took, I think he took some bags to individuals that, that couldn't get there, so appreciate that. So tomorrow, there's a SB CAG meets monthly. We have North County SB CAG representatives, which is Lompoc, myself, Bilton, Solvang, Santa Maria, Guadalupe. We meet in Solvang to discuss North County issues. South County meets in South County for the South County teams. And then that information that's discussed at that meeting goes to the full SB CAG, which is next Thursday. So that's, there's a lot, lot going on, so. Okay, that's all I had. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? All those in favor of the motion, say aye? All ayes. Thank you. Thank you all.